Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item 332?
Yes, item 332, resolution to designate the Little Saigon Cultural and Commercial District. We have a number of public speakers, all in favor.
Very good. Ms. Emerald, did you want to present this item?
You bet. After years of communities coming together, working together, visioning together, and of course, thirty-some years of growth in our Vietnamese community here in San Diego, we have a great opportunity to create another vitally important and cultural district, and that is the Little Saigon District in City Heights. And the people who are here today are folks who have worked tirelessly over the years to make that possible, and I feel it's a privilege to join with you and to help make this happen today. With that, there are a number of people who do want to make some presentations, and then we'll get a motion on the floor and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerald. We do have a number of public speakers on this item. Is there an organized presentation with this?
No, but I do have speakers that want to go first.
Okay. We'll take you in the order that you requested. Because there's so many speakers and they're all in favor, I'm going to put a minute on the clock. If you need a little bit more time than that, we'll work with you. But when the clerk calls your name, if you'd please come and sit in the front row, that'll help us expedite the meeting, and we'll look forward to hearing your comments. Please be seated.
Again, all speakers are in favor, beginning with Cong Nguyen, followed by Frank Wong, followed by David Moti, and please do come forward when your name is called. There are seats reserved in the front. Cong Nguyen, followed by Frank Wong, followed by David Moti, followed by Paul H Tran. If Mr... If Cong Nguyen is not here...
He's here.
Oh, sorry. Cong Nguyen?
This is the time to begin speaking. Hi, Cong, how are you?
Good, how are you? Good morning, everyone. My name is Khoen Nguyen, and I am the new president of the Elkhorn Boulevard BIA. It's been an honor, serving for the last two months so far. Our boulevard is a very vibrant district. It extends from Park Boulevard all the way to Fifty-Fourth Street. It's a very long district. As you tell, we have two council members that are part of our district. Being Vietnamese and living in San Diego for almost forty years now has been a great and wonderful privilege. And having a Vietnamese community in City Heights where someone could go and enjoy ethnic restaurants, great food here in San Diego, is also a wonderful privilege as well. By continued support of the BIA and City Council, we want to see the Little Saigon District flourish and also become a destination for all of us here in San Diego to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Frank Wong, followed by David Moti, followed by Paul H Tran, followed by Ricardo Moran.
Thank you, council members, for having us here. It's a wonderful day. I want to start by thanking Council President Todd Gloria for supporting us since the very, very beginning. That was 2008. He took down a tour with us and supported us a lot. And of course, we want to thank Council Mayor Emerald and Mayor Baughuna. It's your leadership that brought us here today. I'm here today on behalf of the Little Saigon Foundation, as well as the businesses and residents in and around the proposed Little Saigon District. It is generally understood that by branding a product, you make it more marketable. The Little Saigon District is one such product that San Diego can market as a cultural, commercial, and tourist destination. This area is home to the densest and the oldest Vietnamese immigrants since the end of the Vietnam War. In a quarter-mile radius, you will find more than 120 Vietnamese-owned or operated businesses. Within a one-mile radius, you will find five supermarkets that serve all the Vietnamese populations in City Heights. Here is where you find the authentic culture, the food, the people. Besides the cultural product, there you will find cultural competence services, which range from doctors to dentists to pharmacies, from real estate to insurance brokers. There are tutoring services, legal services, immigration services. There are Buddhist temples and Christian churches. You can live here your entire life, never having to step outside, and you will receive all the services that will make your life pretty good. Knowing that there are many cultural assets here, we want to promote them so that San Diego can become much more, even more, marketable. We want to see more customers, higher-quality services. We want to change the image of City Heights as an undesirable place to a desirable place to live, work, and play. Some of the things that Little Saigon Foundation has been doing to revitalize the Little Saigon District and the neighboring residents include regular street cleanup, graffiti removal. I know Council Emerald gets her hand dirty with graffiti removal all the time. We're painting storefronts. In the upcoming month, we will work with the Elkhorn Boulevard Business Improvement Association and the City of San Diego to improve public infrastructure, such as sidewalk, trash bin, benches, transit. The goal is to turn urban blight into a place where people are happy to gather. We gather people through large-scale cultural events. These cultural events bring as much as 10,000 people to the area annually. In the past five years combining, we have brought about 50,000 people to the area. We estimate that each people who come to the district spends up to maybe more than $20 in the district. And with 10,000 people, $5 in the past five years, we have generated as much as $1 million in gross revenues for the businesses. Up to now, our work has been done by volunteers. Since '08, we estimate about 1,000 volunteers who have put in about 40,000 hours of community service. Now is the time that our community see the official recognition for their services and sacrifice. Now is the time for the San Diego City Council to designate the area on Elkhorn Boulevard between Highland and Euclid Avenue as the Little Saigon District. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
David Moti, followed by Paul H Tran, followed by Ricardo Moran, followed by Mark Tran.
I'm David Moti, representing the Kensington-Talmage Planning Group. We are pleased to endorse the creation of the Little Saigon District. We see this as an opportunity to develop local business leadership to address the issues mentioned in our letter, which were storefront facelifts, crime and safety, building repair. And I believe that the really, the early test to gauge the success of this enterprise will be how well these issues are addressed. Make no mistake, these folks have a steep hill to climb. The built environment has been thoroughly strip-malled and huffmanized. This area doesn't have the walkable advantages of North Park, Main Street, or downtown Normal Heights. But change comes one step at a time, and we endorse the opportunity presented here today. Thank you.
Paul H Tran, followed by Ricardo Moran, followed by Mark Tran.
Honored Mr. President and Councilmember, my name is Phoan Hoa Tran. I am a businessperson in the proposed Little Saigon District. And I would like, number one, is to express to you that Vietnam have some traditional that is good, that was nice, that need to be, bring it into United States. Vietnam have also some good cultural need to be assimilated into the U.S. cultural to make it and reach it. And the second thing is, I believe that the growth of the Little Saigon and cause attention to other people, tourists, would be for sure enhance the growth of economy of this country and to San Diego especially. And with that, I don't see any other reason would be negative for forming of the district in San Diego, Little Saigon, and I am totally, fully, no reservation and dogs this formation of this district. Thank you.
Ricardo Moran, followed by Mark Tran, followed by Jim Varnador.
Good morning. I'm also a resident of City Heights. I've been a resident of City Heights for almost three years now, living in Azalea Park. And one thing I'd like to say is that I strongly support the efforts of the Little Saigon Foundation to establish a cultural and business district. I think it would be a benefit to City Heights. We need a strong economic foundation, and I think it would allow us to celebrate the diversity that makes up our neighborhood. Thank you.
Mark Tran, followed by Jim Varnador, followed by Loc Nguyen.
Good morning, Council President Todd Gloria and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Mark Tran, and I'm a lifelong resident of District Nine. My family first arrived in San Diego in 1985 and settled our roots in City Heights as refugees from Vietnam. From this scattered diaspora, a community was forged, where residents could shop, eat, and reconnect with old friends and long-lost family. Ask any Vietnamese-American who arrived between the late '70s and into the mid-'90s, and they will have a similar story that connects to City Heights. It is time we recognize and honor the community that has added to the diverse fabric of this beautiful city. I urge you to support Councilmember Emerald's resolution to designate a Little Saigon Cultural and Commercial District in the City Heights community. Thank you.
Jim Varnador, followed by Loc Nguyen, followed by Hoich Tran.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I am still Jim Varnador. I do still live in City Heights, which is still America's finest community. Patty Vaccarello, the Chair of the City Heights Area Planning Committee, cannot be here to say and ask me to speak to you, to indicate her and her committee's unanimous support for this district designation. Thank you very much. As the Chairman Emeritus of this committee, I point out that, over the past fifteen years, it has been the City Heights Area Planning Committee which has brought together all of our neighbors into a unit, working together. And parts of that you saw over the weekend when Ms. Emerald opened the skate park that the planning committee initiated a dozen or more years ago. And you see today the Little Saigon San Diego Foundation designation being brought to you. City Heights is indeed America's finest community. We're proud of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Loc Nguyen, followed by Hoich Tran, followed by Hyip Diem.
In behalf of the Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce in San Diego, I come up here to support the recognition of the Little Saigon District. My first business I opened in East San Diego, it used to be the New Dance Store. It closed. I opened the restaurant. It's still there. In the last thirty-two, twenty-two years, I worked, I invested in this area. And right now, I own more than two unit apartment in this area. So I support very much for this recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Hoich Tran, followed by Hyip Diem, followed by Kim Trang Deng.
Good morning. My name is Hoich Tran. I am representative of the Vietnamese King Hung Association, and I strongly support the Little Saigon Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Hyip Diem, followed by Kim Trang Deng, followed by Trang Tan Lee.
Good morning. I grew up in the district. I grew up a couple blocks down the street from Forty-Eighth Street. The area is very personal to me. My family started there, a little restaurant, and today it becomes something a little more because it brings more people in, it brings awareness to the community, it brings a new hope to change that area. When I was younger, I imagined that the streets would be cleaner, the storefronts would, you know, be repainted. And little by little, two decades later, things have changed. Things are progressing. Momentum is shifting, and I'm in full support of this designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Trang Deng, followed by Trang Tan Lee, followed by An Nguyen.
Good morning. My name is Kim Trang Deng, Vice President of the Vietnamese Community of San Diego. I'm here to support the Little Saigon District. The number of the reason that we support because of there are many, many activities with the cultural awareness will be, happen here. It will make the City Heights District, City Heights, will become more safe and happier place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Trang Tan Lee, followed by An Nguyen, followed by Phan An.
Good morning, Councilmember. My name is Trang Lee. I am the first Vietnamese open beauty school in Orange County and also in USA. In 1996, I moved to San Diego and opened beauty school, San Diego Beauty College in this county. I created about 12,000 jobs for the low income. That means 12,000 individual and families have stable income. When family have stable, we have a strong community. And we transfer someone from welfare situation into self-support situation and better too. The same in Orange County. Before they become Little Saigon, just some, some beauty school open from the Vietnamese. But now, more than ten school open there, they created, could create a lot of job. Myself, my school creates 12,000 jobs in this county. So if we support for Little Saigon in San Diego, more people, bring more people come here and more beauty school, and we create more jobs. So that's why I strongly, fully support Little Saigon District. Thank you very much.
Thank you. An Nguyen, followed by Phan An, followed by Luc Van Nguyen.
Good morning. My name An Nguyen. I am owner of the beauty salon, and I spoke to Little Saigon population. Thank you.
Thank you. Phan An, or Phan An, followed by Luc Van Nguyen, followed by Thien Philpent. Please come forward. But they asked for five seconds to speak.
My name is Luc Van Nguyen, represent the Vietnamese community of San Diego. I support for Little Saigon for this. Thank you.
So my name is Sung Nguyen. I'm the business owner in City Heights, along Elkhorn Boulevard. I come here today, strongly support the Little Saigon population and to create the Little Saigon District. I think there's no reason to not have a Little Saigon out there because it's already there. Like Frank already just mentioned, we have more than 120 business. And I think with the designation, that will be more vibrant for our community in San Diego. And thank you very much.
Thank you. If any of the other individuals I called wish to speak, come forward. Otherwise, I'll also note that Quin Nguyen, De Li, Bang Tran, and Andy Nguyen also submitted speaker slips in favor and did not wish to speak. That concludes the speakers.
If you'd like to speak, you should come forward. If you filed a speaker slip, just state your name on the record, please.
My name is De Li. First of all, I wouldn't like to make a side comment, that I know every single one of you here on, sitting on that chamber. You know, I see Andrew sitting in that Assistant City Attorney's Office. But however, first of all, it's an honor to be here. And the Vietnamese community is the second-largest Asian ethnic group here in San Diego, beside Filipino. We have businesses everywhere, in Linda Vista, East San Diego, in Mesa, in Claremont, you go everywhere. We are doctors, we are lawyer, we are military officer, we are servant of this country. It is an honor to finally see that there's a proposal that the Vietnamese community are finally being recognized here in San Diego for the contribution they have made to this community itself and to the community of San Diego. So I urge the Council to go ahead and vote for the Little Saigon Foundation, and thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
That concludes the speakers on this item.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who came down this morning. We appreciate having you here at the Council. We'll go back to the Council Representative for City Heights, Ms. Emerald.
Isn't this wonderful?
It is.
This is more than just a cultural district or a commercial district. This is personal, and that's why all of you are here. And I know that none of us here on this dais could express it better than you have in this last few minutes. So thank you for your support. Thank you to the Little Saigon Foundation for your determination and your focus. Thank you to the City Heights Planning Organization. Thank you to our Boulevard Business Improvement Association. I know everybody is very excited about the possibilities. This is not only an expression of the diversity that makes San Diego, and in particular, City Heights so special, it also speaks to the unity in a community that respects the differences that we share and learns from them and acknowledges that all of these different cultures, all of these different communities coming together enriches all of us. So with this, I would like to move the item. Again, thank you for all of your support. This is just the beginning. We have an opportunity to create a remarkable area of the city, one that will attract people from throughout San Diego and the region and throughout California to come and celebrate a beautiful part of our history, our culture, and again, our diversity. So I'd like to move the item.
Thank you, Ms. Emerald. I'm happy to second that motion. Ms. Zaff.
Thank you. And I didn't know this was happening, but this is absolutely terrific. I've been looking on the website and looking at the different pages, and I see that there is a Lantern Festival coming up next month in July, and it's definitely something that I'd like to go and attend. You know, I've traveled a lot backpacking on the Jeep around the world, and I just absolutely love the culture and tradition of so many different people. I've been in Singapore, Thailand. It's on my bucket list to go to Vietnam, and that's going to have to wait until my kids are a little bit older. But for those of us who can't make it there, it's great to have a place where everything is consolidated so you can see the culture, the traditions, the food, all in one place when you can't, when you can't make it there yourself. And just listening to a few of, a few of the speakers, I have a good friend Vietnamese, and we were having dinner one time, and he was telling me about his family's experience. And we were in a restaurant, and he said it would be just like us, standing up right now, getting up from the table, and going out quickly, do a boat, getting on that boat, leaving, and never coming back. And that was his family experience, and that's how they ended up here and living in Claremont. I was at another dinner with a gentleman, and you know, I was the only woman there at the table, and they were all very, very gracious and all waiting on me, and I had a chance to talk to them. And it turned out the gentleman I was sitting next to had spent ten years in a prisoner of war camp in Vietnam, and it was Americans that rescued him, and he ended up in this country. And so there's so many stories, and I think about these, you know, they just pop into your head, and about the people that are out there, and just wonderful people. And it's so, so important to preserve your culture, preserve your traditions, pass them on, because so many families had to get up from the table and leave, and they ended up here. And so it's just very, you know, just striking to me that the people that I'm surrounded with, at the grocery store on the street, you know, sitting next to you in a restaurant, have these stories. So anyway, very happy to support this and looking forward to being there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zaff. Mr. Sherman.
Yeah, I'm very happy to see this before us today and looking forward to supporting this resolution. I've got a little bit of history with the Vietnamese culture. I taught a Vietnamese martial arts style called Khung Nu for about twelve years, and O Sen Se Dong, before he passed, was a very, very good friend. And the one thing I learned studying martial arts with O Sen Se and his children, Bao and Quin and An and Tu, was that there's a lot of things that the Vietnamese culture brings to the United States: family, hard work, respecting your elders, culture and tradition, those type of things that in this fast-paced Americanized world, a lot of times we seem to forget. So I'm very much looking forward to this. I'm very much looking forward to doing whatever I can to help out. Maybe we'll have to get the Vietnamese people in Linda Vista and District Seven and over in District Nine, maybe we'll have a little competition. So very much looking forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you, and I wanted to say congratulations. I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I was really moved by all of you. As in, coming from an immigrant family myself, your stories, I hear it all the time, from my family, from my neighbors, from the people who I care about. And you know, we have an issue in this country when it relates to immigration. That's an unfortunate debate that I think hopefully will end soon, but you exemplify why America is so great. And it's people who come from all over the world who come here that leave so much behind, and they're successful. But we also want to maintain that culture because as an immigrant, I understand the values that my own family brought when they came from Mexico, and it's, it makes life so much richer. I think you all understand, especially the young ones who are second generation. Your parents bring with them some really special things that there's no way to explain sometimes, the weird things that your families do that only you can understand and you can appreciate. But the elders who are here really were the ones who inspired me to say something I, again, I wasn't going to, but I just, you're wonderful and very inspirational, and it's what makes this country great. It's what makes San Diego great, and I really appreciate your efforts in doing this, and I thank my colleagues, Council President Gloria and Councilmember Emerald for really, you know, standing with you and going through this and recognizing what this means to San Diego. And we've all enjoyed the culture, I think, at some point or another by visiting establishments or having friends who come from the Vietnamese culture. But to officially recognize it and to acknowledge that you're a critical piece of what makes San Diego so great, I'm proud to be a Councilmember today to support that.
Great comments, Mr. Alvarez. I would start by just thanking Ms. Emerald for bringing this forward. As someone who once had the privilege of representing City Heights, Kensington-Talmage, where the proposed district will be, I know that the community has worked on this for a very long time, and it's great to get to a point where folks can declare victory on one part of this overall equation, the first part. You've got to take a first step, right? I also want to thank the members of the broader community, certainly the planning groups who are represented, the Business Improvement District who came. The many years of work that you've done have really built a coalition that's even broader than the Vietnamese-American community, but a community that's really coming together under the notion that we want to do neighborhood improvements. And as was mentioned, someone said, I think it was Frank, about brand. And I think it was the bid that said that this is the largest, I think it may be the largest bid in the city. When you go from Park Boulevard all the way out to Fifty-Fourth, you've got to break into digestible pieces, right? And this is a piece of such a defined community where you can create a concept that's going to be wildly successful. And we know that because it's already happened with Little Italy, right, in downtown. And everyone knows that that's been a humongous success, and so I hope to see something similar to that along Elkhorn Boulevard. And mark my words, I think it will happen because we've built this consensus, because you have the planning groups, the businesses, the broader community saying, "We want to see improvements here." And so how can the Council not support that? Of course, we're going to support that. But we do it knowing that this is just step one, and I see a lot of nodding heads, and that's good because we're going to have to figure out ways to improve the sidewalks, fix the facades, really create the attraction that we want it to be, not just for San Diego, but as Ms. Emerald said, from across the state and perhaps across the country. We have such a vibrant Vietnamese-American community in San Diego that we really should be a place that folks would want to come if they want to experience Vietnamese culture. And as someone said, they kind of already do. This is just a way of organizing it in perhaps a more direct way and generate some economic benefits, some neighborhood improvement benefits, I think is all good things. 120 businesses, five supermarkets. It's just a vibrant, wonderful community that has done so much without this designation that I think now that it will have this designation, the sky's the limit, really, when it comes to this issue. So certainly, kudos to everyone that's involved, particularly Ms. Emerald and the District Nine staff, for shepherding this through. I cannot wait to see what comes in the years ahead. What work has already been done is impressive, but there's so much more that I think will happen as a result of today's action. And lastly, it was mentioned, I think, by the last speaker, that the Vietnamese community is the second-largest Asian-American community in our county, the first being the Filipino-American community. community, of which I'm proud to be a member. I would just say that this is an opportunity to really reflect the contributions of a community. I think certainly when we talk about our Filipino-American community, we often feel as though those contributions, many decades long that they've been, are not always recognized. Hopefully today, the community can see that what I suspect will be unanimous Council support for this request, that there's a reflection of the gratitude that we have as city leaders for the contributions of Vietnamese-Americans to this city. Our city would not be America's finest city without you, and this is a small reflection, a small return on what you've already given us to the city and a promise of more things to come. So if there's no additional Council comments, I'd ask all the Councilmembers to please vote. There's been a motion by Ms. Emerald that I second it. Clerk, please call the roll, and that passes unanimously. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. That's true.